And then do.
We're good.
We're good.
Thank you. Good afternoon. It is four thirty-five P M on Tuesday, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We will call the City Council Meeting of the City of New Ulm to order. At this time, item number one is our consent agenda. Councillors, what are your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That motion does carry. Moving on to item number two, public hearing, two point one is two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three weed removal, snow removal and property repair assessments.
Councillors, this is just setting the date for the public hearing and approving that list that was attached for the public hearing.
Motion to approve establishing those special assessments for two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three weed removal, snow removal, demolition expenses and removal of rock pile within the city right of way and set the date for a public hearing on Tuesday, August or October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three at four thirty P M.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number two point two, two thousand and twenty-two utility street and alley improvements, group one project, final assessment, public hearing.
Madam President, City Councillors, this is a public hearing for the final assessment roles for the two thousand and twenty-two utility street and alley improvement project. Before you is a list of seven project locations in which we are proposing assessments today. Assessment notices have been mailed out to the benefiting property owners. Total amount recommended to be specially assessed is about one point four million or thirty-eight point two percent of the estimated final project cost of three point seven million dollars. It'd be my recommendation that we would go through each project location separately, wondering or inquiring if anyone wants to be heard on these assessments. My office nor the finance office have received any verbal or written objections to these proposed assessments to date. Received a couple of general phone calls with questions on billing and repayment and things of that nature. But at this time, it'd be my recommendation we open public hearing for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Stodheim. At this time, we will open the public hearing. If you would like to be heard when we talk about your location, come up to the podium, state your name and your address for the record, please. We'll go through these one by one. Jacob Street and Samson Street Utility Roadway Extension. German Street from Seventh North Street to Twelfth North Street. Alley Block One Seventy-four, south of Center Street and Alley from Seventh South Street to Eighth South Street between Payne and Jefferson Street. Number four is Alley Block One Ninety-six, north of Center Street and Alley from Fourteenth North Street to Fifteenth North Street between Garden Street and Payne Street.
Randy Teal, fourteen twenty-five North Payne. I've got a couple of questions on this. It says in that description that there is seven inches of concrete alley improvement.
Madam President, City Councillors, Mr. Teal. So the concrete approaches are replaced as on a need-to-replace basis in order to keep construction costs down and reasonable. We don't replace it unless it's really busted up and is in need of replacement, so.
So is that, is that taken into consideration with the final amount?
Yes. Yep. Yep. The final amounts are based on the actual construction costs of costing that we experience on the project, so.
Okay. Because they had not done either end of the alley.
Right. Yep. Yep.
So then the other one was the restoration part of it?
Yep.
So all the grass is dead. Whatever they put down is dead on my property.
Okay.
I'm on the hill. The sod has shrunk four inches in between the rolls.
Sure.
So I don't know if they plan on putting some erosion control or just it's my baby or?
Generally, the sod, first I'm hearing about it, but generally the sod is accepted during that construction season. We can touch base with the contractor and you afterwards if we need to sprinkle some topsoil and seed or something like that. We can, we can look at that.
Okay. And then the last item was now they come and seal coated it.
Yep.
They seal coated it at seven thirty at night and it rained that night.
Yep.
So all the, and then they swept the rock the next morning. So nothing stuck.
Yeah, they, they got caught. Yep. Yeah, we're aware of it and they picked up what they could, so.
Because it don't look like any of it stuck.
So, yeah, we were working with the contractor on that, so. Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teal. Anyone else regarding this section? Okay, next one is Alley Block One Ninety. Oh, no, I think I did this one. Yes, sorry. Number six is sanitary sewer repairs. That affected the area of Nineteenth North Street in the intersection of State Street and lining the sanitary sewer manhole at First, South and Broadway.
Madam President, you did skip over One Ninety.
Okay. I wasn't sure. I saw One Ninety, One Ninety-six. Okay. Going back to number five, Alley Block One Ninety, north of Center Street, Alley from Eighth North Street to Ninth North Street between Garden and Payne Street. And the last improvement project was concrete sidewalk and ADA improvements. This project consisted of ADA pedestrian ramp improvements to complement the improvements scheduled within the two thousand and twenty-two surface reconstruction to meet current ADA requirements per New Ulm's adopted ADA transition plan. At this time, the public hearing is still open. We will keep it open until after we pass the resolution.
Being there's nobody else wants to come to the mic, I'll offer the resolution, close the public hearing on adopting the final assessment roles for the two thousand and twenty-two utility street and alley improvements, group one project payable over a ten-year period along with a four point two-five simple interest charge on the unpaid balance.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? I just had a question for Mr. Scott if this is, if we're moving forward in the right fashion, just because we did have one item that we are still potentially working on.
Yeah, Council President, members of the council, I listened to the public comments offered. I did not consider those to be objections that require an individual response. Those are more questions that will continue to be worked on with the city engineer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Scott. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the role.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Christian.
Yes.
Councillor Schultz.
Yes.
Councillor Wormka.
Yes.
President Betker.
Yes, that motion carries. Item number two point three, public hearing for noise variance for two oh nine Pub and Grill for the Arctic Plunge Event. At this time, we'll have a public hearing regarding the noise variance. If there's anyone that would like to be heard, please come in to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Well, I'm not seeing anybody stepping forward, so I think I'm gonna offer a motion to close the public hearing and, close the public hearing for the noise variance for two oh nine Pub and Grill Arctic Plunge Event.
I'll second.
We do have a motion and a second. Can we just read all of the item into the record, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Item number two point three.
So substance of the public hearing, offering the resolution, closing the public hearing, authorize a request from two oh nine Pub and Grill and Kaiserha for noise variance to permit amplified sound on Minnesota Street between Second and Third North Street on Saturday, September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three from six P M to ten P M during the Arctic Plunge Event.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the role.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Christian.
Yes.
Councillor Schultz.
Yes.
Councillor Wormka.
Yes.
President Betker.
Yes, that motion does carry. Item number two point four, public hearing for noise variance for New Ulm Chamber of Commerce Oktoberfest. At this time, we'll open the public hearing regarding the noise variance for downtown New Ulm for Oktoberfest.
Nobody wants to talk tonight.
And were there any written or anything? No, okay. Just, I know you guys would tell me, but.
Without hearing anybody again, I'll close the public hearing and authorize a request of the New Ulm Chamber of Commerce for noise variance to permit amplified sound on Minnesota Street between Center and First North Streets on Saturday, October seventh, two thousand and twenty-three from four P M to midnight and on Sunday, October eighth, two thousand and twenty-four for Oktoberfest activities.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the role.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
Councillor Christian.
Yes.
Councillor Schultz.
Yes.
Councillor Wormka.
Yes.
President Betker.
Yes, motion carries. Item number three point one, rideshare services license to Heidi Falk.
I'll offer a motion to approve the issuance of a rideshare license to Heidi Falk, twenty-four South Payne Street, New Ulm, Minnesota, through a period beginning September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, subject to the compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
And Heidi's here tonight.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
You know, one comment, just a question probably of more councillors than myself. Is it, is it possible to simplify when people come in for an Uber or a taxi cab license? They go to the first floor, get their license, pay and move forward? Or how much do we have to change in the ordinance to do that?
I would defer to Robert on that question.
And Robert, we were having a little bit of this, you know, I did bring this up just because now that we're actually seeing it in action as folks are getting licensed, if this is something that we need to approve at council every time somebody comes for a license, what we're trying to do is streamline it, make it easier for everyone, kind of similar to getting other licenses in town.
Yeah, there is a requirement in the ordinance that the, excuse me, I'm looking at the wrong provision.
Basically, it's a change in our ordinance.
It would require, it does appear it would require a change in ordinance to allow it to be administratively approved, but I'm not seeing any reason that couldn't be accomplished if that's the direction the city council wants to pursue.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Mr. Scott. My other question is if somebody's doing multiple rideshare services, I don't even know if one person can drive for both companies or not, but that, that, that would all be covered under one license, correct?
Because it's per vehicle.
Okay, thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Heidi. Welcome for, for providing Uber services in New Ulm. Thank you so much. That's why we do this, right? Item number three point two is a taxi license.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a taxi license to Mini Transportation Services LLC owned by Chad Paulson, two zero five nine nine Gunnison Drive, Lakeville, Minnesota, for two taxi vehicles for the period, period beginning September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Just like to add, Chad did reach out, you know, was, wanted to be here but couldn't, but is looking, you know, this will be a family-run operation, they'll have their two, two vehicles and they'll look at potentially expanding the services offered down the road, but just understood what the transportation crisis was local, graduated from, from school here, so looking at providing services.
Thank you.
Stick. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number three point three, temporary on sale intoxicating liquor licenses for New Ulm Small Business Owners Group.
I'll offer the motion to approve the issuance of seven temporary on sale intoxicating liquor licenses for New Ulm Small Business Owners Group, twenty North Minnesota Street, New Ulm, for an event on Wednesday, October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number three point four, lawful gambling permits for Sioux Trails Ducks Unlimited.
I'll make the motion to approve the issuance of a lawful gambling permit for Sioux Trails Ducks Unlimited as follows. Conduct bingo gambling at the New Ulm American Legion Post one thirty-two at Thirteenth South Minnesota Street, New Ulm, on Saturdays to December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and conduct gambling and conduct raffle gambling at the Minnesota National Guard Armory, two oh five North Broadway, New Ulm, on Friday, January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number four point one, summary of business conducted during board and commission meetings.
I can start as far as, just had one this last month, which was the E D A that our president and myself attended. We, looks like we finally wrapped up the lease agreement with a few more changes last minute. So hopefully that's going out now to the folks that are looking at leasing that property. Construction should finish up next week, so we're looking at a November first potential start date. So it's coming along very well.
All right. Heritage Preservation met last night. Two items were on the agenda. They did okay a signage request for Rodney Vegas Junior at two twelve North Minnesota Street. It will now be Capone's Barber Shop. And then also an awning request from Brian Ardloff at the Fourth North Minnesota Street. Those are both approved. I was unable to attend the park and rec meeting, but as you're aware, on our agenda, we do have some issues with smoking in the city parks coming up and one donation. That's it.
And I was unable to attend the transportation committee, but were, were you able to be there, Joe?
Yeah, both Chris and I were there.
Okay, I was just wondering if there's anything to share about the ridership of Herman Express? Is that kind of where they like it? I was kind of upset I couldn't be there for that, but.
It was, it's a good, our, our min dot rep, you know, likes where the numbers are at. We're around that three, averaging about three twenty-five a month, you know, a little bit more than that. Past, past couple of months, we've had three ninety, you know, plus, so I think we're trending in the right, trending in the right direction. So hopefully we can keep that momentum moving forward.
Perfect. Thank you.
The only concern they really have is Sunday, or Sunday, Saturday ridership. Numbers are relatively low, so I think they're gonna do kind of an advertising blitz to try to promote the Saturday route, to try to get those numbers up a little bit to justify having the route on Saturdays. But with winter coming, maybe we'll see an increase on weekends, so.
Thank you.
Mayor?
I attended a ribbon cutting at the Gypsy Girl Consignment Boutique this last Thursday, and I encourage you, if you haven't been there, to check it out. They have men's clothing, women's clothing. A lot of artisans have their items for sale. I think they have seventeen local artists that have consigned their items there. It's worth stopping in and taking a look and the building itself and the way it's been renovated. They have the stairway open to the elevated offices have been redone. All of the original woodwork has been redone, and so it's very attractive. So stop in and check that out. Also, Sister Cities Commission is planning a banquet. We have thirteen guests coming from Ulm and Neu Ulm, Germany, for their first weekend of Oktoberfest, and everybody's invited to the banquet on October eighth. It's going to be at the community center, starting five o'clock social, six o'clock dinner, and tickets will be available for thirty dollars each, so we're encouraging everybody to get their ticket and join us that evening. There's also a band from Neu Ulm coming that weekend, and they will be attending the banquet and performing as well.
Thank you. I just wanted to note that the mayor and several of the E D A commissioners did attend a Rural Voices forum that was put on by the Smith Foundation last week out at Shell's last Tuesday. We had over fifty, you know, local elected officials or representation, a lot of business owners. It was facilitated by Kerry Miller from Minnesota Public Radio, and they are gonna be airing that forum on public radio. I don't know the times and dates yet, but you can probably, you know, check your local listings and can get the information on that. But it was more to hear about the challenges of smaller entrepreneurs in rural and, you know, just some great conversation and great dialogue, you know, learning from each other and just how these entrepreneurs really have to lean on each other to, to make a go of it. And without having that support and network, we probably wouldn't have a lot of the amazing businesses that we have in our communities. So just another good event, and I just wanted to make note of that as well. Any other updates?
Okay, thank you so much. Moving on to new business. Item number five point one, Nicollet County's C S A H thirty-seven snow removal agreement.
Thank you, Madam President, City Councillors. This is a yearly agreement. Actually, we haven't brought it the last couple of years because thirty-seven has been closed with the Highway fourteen reconstruction project. But this is an agreement between Nicollet County and the city, authorizing the city staff to plow that portion of CASA thirty-seven. So Public Works Superintendent was good with the monthly rate, and that's the same rate that we've had in past agreements.
We'll take it.
I'll propose a motion to approve the Nicollet County Highway thirty-seven snow removal agreement dated October tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and authorize the city manager and finance director to execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number five point two, task order two thousand and twenty dash zero four for airport engineering services.
Madam President, City Councillors, this proposed task order would be for the design and construction services for the extension of the apron at the New Ulm Municipal Airport. This would be to the southeast of the existing apron. Purpose of this project was for the future relocation of the fueling system, which is, is reaching the end of its useful life. This would also help to, in the future, with the airport layout plan, that would eliminate the conflict between delivery vehicles for fuel and air, aircraft traffic out on the apron. There's a, we expect a future FAA grant and state grant that would cover ninety-five percent of this cost.
Thank you, Mr. Stodheim.
Well, I'm gonna offer the motion to approve the task order number two thousand and twenty dash zero four for airport engineering services, adding the task to the meet and hunt professional services contract in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number five point three, statewide health improvement partnership application.
Madam President, City Councillors, the Heart of New Ulm in conjunction with the New Ulm Bicycle Group is proposing to install bike may use full lane signage law on the city bike shero routes throughout the city. This would take place of the repainting of the shero routes on a yearly basis and that kind of four-year cycle. As noted within the action form, this would have a positive impact on the street department budget, and if awarded, if awarded this grant, the next item on the agenda kind of relates to the installation of, of these signs. So they would be placed on the similar routes where the sheroes are at, and eventually the sheroes would just fade or until they're seal coated over.
Thank you. I know that the bike sheroes, they were initially part of the Heart of New Ulm work, but then we had to take that, the repainting over, and I think New Ulm work, but then we had to take that, the repainting over. And I think, were we on a cycle where we did them like every two years or rotating through or?
I think it's.
Half and half. Okay. And so that would just, so these, just so people understand, would allow the bikers to use the full lanes versus directing them to just use the sheroes. And then we would save the costs of all the repainting of.
Well, the, Madam President, City Councilors, it would, bicyclists will have to follow the state statute and state rules as, as far as riding in the lanes and moving over for vehicles and things of that nature. But this just, as opposed to the sheroes, it gives that visual cue that there may be bikers present just to heighten the awareness for motorists and bikers alike. So.
Right.
I'm wondering if we have a conflict before the meeting started. One of our visitors dropped off the, the rules about operation of a bicycle, 169.222. And that says they have to ride over to the, the right as close as possible. So that would be a conflict from what state law says versus what this would say. Do we have to worry about that, Mr. Scott? Or do you want to take a look at that and get back to us?
A council member, I would absolutely need to look at that and give you an opinion after the meeting.
We're not on a timeline on this, are we?
I don't believe so. You know, the signage is a standard sign within the Minnesota Uniform Traffic Control Manual.
It is.
So other municipalities use it. So I don't, I, I think the state statute still overrules in that. I think the main purpose of the sign is to bring that awareness that, to a motorist that there may be a bike.
The sign essentially is replacing the shero.
Right. Yep. Yeah, the shero serves as its same purpose.
So I don't, I don't know that I read this ahead of time, and I don't know that I necessarily see a conflict with that. But again, I'm not an attorney. That's why we have Mr. Scott.
Well, if you do, there's other cities using it, then it's, it's met the, met the test. I, I just thought maybe something we came up with and.
Oh, no, it's a, it's a sign that's in the uniform manual.
Then I think I'm fine moving forward on it.
Thank you, Councilor Schultz.
I'll make the motion authorize a city engineer to apply for a statewide health improvement partnership active living grant.
Second.
And a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay. So yep, yep, yep. Okay. So yeah, we're going to work through a couple of items of business, and then we're gonna, we're gonna move up an item here. Item number 5.4 Bike May Use Full Lane Signage.
No, we just did that one.
Yep.
No, this is, this is item 5.4. Yep.
Madam President, City Councilors, so this goes in conjunction with the last application. So if the, if we are awarded the funds for the purchase of the signs, this item would allow the street department to install those signs. Because any signs that are installed are, need to be ordered in by resolution. So this resolution is really just stating the street department can install these signs wherever there's the sheroes on those roadway segments.
I'll offer the resolution authorizing the street department to install bike may use full lane signage along the city bike shero routes contingent on the city receiving the grant funding for the signs.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Warmka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion does carry. At this time, we will move down to item number 5.12 Pole Banners on Shell Road.
Council President, Councilors, before you have a request from Shell's to use the light poles from 19th North going back, or 19th South going back to the brewery, they just want permission to use the poles. There would be no expense to the city. They would pay for the installation, the design of the banners, putting the banners up and down. They just want to see if you will give them permission to use those. And they would be on, only on one side of the pole. It's not going to be like on Broadway, just be one as they're going down Shell's Road to have events, welcome people to Shell's Brewery. I know Kurt is here if you have any specific questions.
You guys are using the same company that city has used in the past for the signage?
So we're going to be making our own signage in the house. So we'll do a little bit of.
Just come up to the microphone. Thank you so much.
Here with Shell's here. Yeah, we'll be using the, our own print shop to create the signage. We did buy the brackets from a professional company down in Texas. So they aren't homemade or anything like that. They're made specifically for these types of poles. It'll be promoting our events, welcoming people to town, as well as promoting different events when we have a lull in our area to, you know, bring people to, you know, if we would have had these up, we would use it for Turn Fest or Herman Fest or things like that to promote other things going on in town as well. So.
Great way to brighten up that road. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to authorize Shell's Brewery to use the light poles along Shell's Road to hang pole banners beginning at the corner of 19th South Street and continuing to the brewery.
Second.
Second. And a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Moving back to item number 5.6, we have preliminary city of New Ulm 2024 budget.
Madam President, 5.5.
5.5.
Oh, sorry. I thought, oh my gosh. Okay. Yes, sorry. Item number 5.5, 2023 RRFB Project.
Councilors, yeah, with five agenda items in a row. I'm sure you're tired of me talking just as much as I am.
I just, you're so busy today, Joe. You're doing great.
My last one, I promise. Before you is just the approval of the plans and specs for 2023 RRFB project. So as you may remember, you authorized me to apply for active transportation infrastructure grant funding to fund this project. And happy to say that even though we missed out on the first round of awards, we were good enough for the second round. So we received $180,000 in active transportation funding for this project. And then this is really just the next step to move this project forward, authorize us to open bids, and then work through the approval process and grant approval process after that.
Well, I'm going to offer the resolution approving the plans and specs, ordering to advertise for bids, set the bid opening date, and authorize the staff to receive and open bids for the 2023 RRFB project at 10:00 AM Wednesday, October 11th, 2023, in the city hall council chambers.
Duggan.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Warmka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Now, item 5.6 Preliminary City of New Ulm 2024 Budget.
Connect it here. I can't see the screen with the number on it. Andre? Yep.
Mine's not opening.
That's okay. We got it on the big screen for.
TV on? I haven't seen anything on that one. I don't think the TV's on, Joe.
Yes, no, it's got a power cycle from here. Hang on.
It was on earlier. I tested everything. Of all that, I go through and I review everything and really didn't find a lot of changes. The department heads generally know their departments and do a good job of budgeting conservatively. So I didn't make a lot of changes there. What I'm presenting tonight is what we have plugged in for the numbers. Of course, you can change the preliminary budget at this point in time. And that's where it will be the highest it could be for the year. You won't be able to reduce it after, or to increase it after this point. So we can go through and look at some of the details here. It's just a short presentation. So this first slide just shows some of the highlights in the budget, the things that really helped us to keep things in check this year. LGA, of course, increased tremendously this last year. The state legislature approved large changes to that program. So we have more than a half a million dollars extra coming to us this year than we have in past years. Of course, interest rates have gone up significantly for everybody in this market. So that added about $200,000 to the budget as well. And our debt levy has gone down, one, because of the interest, of course, that, that fund is earning, and two, because of some of the debt we've paid off over the last couple of years early. So we're doing good there. So that saved us about $150,000. So what I'm presenting right now is a levy increase of about five and a half million dollars, or 5.78% over last year. And then I found out from the county that the tax capacity also increased tremendously again, 16%, which is almost equal to last year's. So that had a significant impact on the tax rate, you'll see as we go through the presentation. This slide just gives you an idea of where that tax levy and our tax rate has been over the years. You can see here that large decrease because of that tax capacity increase. With the levy increase at 5.78%, our tax rate will actually still go down 6.82 percentage points. Down, so it'll be just below 70%, which is lower than it's been since, I believe, 2008, I think, if I remember correctly. So that's a huge decrease. And then, of course, that debt, that debt levy had an impact on that. That dotted line in this, in the screen, of course, is just the ideal trend line. I'm not saying 76% is the ideal tax rate, but ideally, you would see that tax rate stay steady over years, meaning that our tax, our property values are enough to absorb any inflationary increases with the budget. So over the years, you can see where that tax rate really had gone up and down a little bit. But overall, we've, we've leveled out from where we were in 2013. Then this gets more into the details that are in the budget. Looking at this list, these are things that are in the budget that impacted that levy. Those things that are highlighted on the screen, those are items that are in there that we really have no control over. So there, there's not a lot to discuss around those issues at this point in the process. So you can see where our health insurance premiums have gone up, not as much as they should have. We have been lucky enough, we've been locked into some premium increase, or rate locks for the last couple of years, where we're, we're increasing premiums about 11% this year. They could have gone up 24% is what our agents were telling us we needed to see this year. So that will play large into next year's budget as we look forward there. The legal fees, the first couple of years with left and embarrass, or not left and embarrass. Clarity and hood, sorry. We've changed a couple of times. We weren't really sure where those were going to land. So this increase actually gets us back on par. We've been well over budget with legal fees in the last couple of years. The police department overtime is something too we've been trying to get a handle on, and this just puts us more in line with, with what our past has been over the last few years. And then the contributions to nonprofits, of course, that we went through that application process this year and approved all of those in August. So that was about $150,000. That's also in the budget. And then looking at those items that are not highlighted that are in the budget, that would include the strategic plan for $100,000, which has about a little more than a 1% impact on the levy. We have some other items in there that will help with promoting New Ulm, as well as analyzing some of the data that we have. So that includes the promotional video for $24,000, the marketing and branding for $25,000, and then the retail strategies for $50,000. We added in $10,000 extra for legal fees for a possible land transaction that we're looking at in '24. And then the Broadway traffic study is in there, and that is just our portion of that. The state is also sharing the cost of that. And then looking at the park and rec fund, they had four larger items within their budget. One is to replace park equipment. We defined it as Highland Park, but they're trying to decide the best park to use those funds in to update that equipment at this point in time. So that's $175,000. And that may be something that needs to continue over the next several years in order to make sure that all of the nice parks that we have stay in that, in that great condition. They have $140,000 in there for the pickleball courts at Lincoln Park. So that would be refurbishing those and improving those. Some maintenance that needs to be done at the Riverside Park Building for about $20,000, and then another maintenance position to help keep up with all of the parks and the buildings within the system.
So we don't have to back up, Nicole. Riverside Park, why are we not using our property maintenance that we put away every year?
We have that option, and that's one of the things that I played with as we.
Okay. I mean, I realize it's only .21 levy impact, but we have a huge fund for that.
You'll see that when I, well, you'll kind of see that when I go through some of the scenarios that I work through. This slide just shows some of the things that are in the budget that are new, that really had no impact on the levy whatsoever because there's other funds supporting them. That includes the stormwater utility. So that will bring in about $550,000 depending on where that fee is set once that program is put in place. So that will cover their tech, their new employee, some office reconfiguration in the vehicle and computer to accommodate the new employee, and then any remaining funds would be transferred out to help reduce the bonding funds for future years. And then the public, or the legislature approved a large public safety fund, basically a grant, I guess, that will go, it just goes out to all the cities. We'll actually get that in December of this year. And then that will be split between, 7525 between the police department and the fire department. And this is, these are some of the items that the police department has decided to use those funds on in 2024. So as I went through, I think in the past, I've given you the different scenarios and showing you the different, different options. When I was looking at some of those scenarios and what they do to the levy and how they impact the tax rate, you can see everything. I always left in the capital funds. So all those sinking funds are in the budget, no matter what I tried. Not that they have to stay there, but that's kind of the basis that I've played with. And then looking at those other possible changes, those are the things that I played with that were in the budget. Some of them concern those items that were on the previous list and just using different funds for those things. So with the five or six scenarios that I did come up with, they ranged anywhere from the 5.78% levy increase to the 1.27% increase, which decreases the tax rate almost 10 percentage points. So those things that we've played with are just using the funding from the capital funds and from the sales tax funds to help with some of, some of the projects. There's a matching amount required for a trail grant that was received. As of right now, that is in the levy. We have the option of taking it out, including it in the bonding. And then the other option would be to use park and rec fund balance to help cover, cover some of those equipment replacements or the pickleball courts or something in that, in that department. And then also possibly using park and rec fund balance to help pay for the assessments that will, that will hit next year for those projects that were completed this year by the parks. And then also eliminating that park and rec position is, is the last thing that I really played with. So those funding options are things that we can use to help reduce that levy, as well as some of those other items that were on that previous list that I didn't consider in these, in these scenarios. This one just really illustrates this, and I kind of hinted at this with the health insurance earlier. The lower we make that levy this year, the larger it will be next year. We know that in '25, we're going to have significant wage increases and significant health and, health insurance costs. And just those alone, when I played with some of the future estimates, you know, if we go with the 5.78%, next year, we'll be starting at a 9% possibly, if, if not a little higher, depending what some of the other needs are as, as departments submit their budgets. If we go down to that 1.27%, we're looking at a 14% or more increase just to start the preliminary levy next year.
So I do have that question, and then I will be silent on it. Next year will be the year to use some of those fund balances?
I believe so. Yeah.
I'll back off this year on it.
We'll have the option next year to use, I mean, if, if we leave that money there and we don't use it now, to use the fund balance to help buy down some of those wage increases or possibly the health insurance premiums or, or those, those items that will have a big impact on the budget. Next year, all of the union contracts are open too. So that, I mean, that throws a lot of unknowns out there as well. This gives you an idea of what we're seeing in some of the other communities around the state. A lot of these communities are ones we normally compare ourselves to. You can see we're sitting right, we're, we're at the bottom. We're, we're looking a lot better than most of these communities. I tried to find out their impacts for, like. I tried to find out their impacts for, like their tax rates, because typically, we are one of the higher ones for the, for the city tax rate. But the 2023 data wasn't out there, and I know that that impacted every community as much as it did us last year with all those large property value increases. But I wasn't able to find that information, yet the Department of Revenue didn't have that available. So you can see where we are compared to some of the other communities. And I believe that's all I have there. So I'll open up to you for your questions and discussion.
Perfect, thank you. I mean, I know the work that goes into it, and you can, you know, drive yourself nuts sometimes trying to play with a lot of the different scenarios. It can be fun, and then after a while, it's like, what, how do I get back to where I started? No, I think very good work. I appreciate, you know, the increase in the LGA that we've gotten and, and how we work to pay down our debt. And so, you know, that gives us choices as a community. And, you know, if that last slide isn't a testament to the work that you're doing, I don't know what is, so.
Nicole, question, we, you know, a month ago, we decided to not continue with the leaf vacuum system, which was 140,000 we put in this year's budget in a fund somewhere. How does that interplay here? Or can it?
So that money was budgeted as a transfer to the 601 Fund, which is the equipment fund we used to buy all of our vehicles and, and street equipment and those types of issues or items. So that money will still be transferred to 601. And really, that fund has taken a hit over the last several years. Because the amount that has contributed from every department every year has not increased, we haven't increased that percentage at all in order to keep the levy in check. I think this will help to put more money back into that fund, to help absorb some of those changes.
Stay in that account.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And it'll be used for, and I know inflation has driven up the cost of all that equipment tremendously, so I think they're going to need that over the next few years.
Thank you.
A question is out with the budget. Do we need to do that at a work session, look at maybe just bumping up those, I call it, rental fee from every department?
Well, we did this year. So there is actually an 8% increase in there this year, which is what we used to budget annually. In the last several years, it's either been 0% or 2%. So.
Wow.
I mean, don't get me wrong, the cash in that department is, right now, is sufficient to support the equipment for the next couple of years. But as, as costs go up, it's going to become an issue. I am working on some future projections and long-term planning reports that will be included in the final budget report, that will have that cash flow in there as well for that department, so.
Thank you, Nicole. Any other questions or comments?
Oh, I wanted to add, too, I can't see my notes on here the way it was written. Even with the decrease in the tax rate, just so it kind of puts things in perspective, with people's property values increasing the way they are, even going down the six, almost seven point, percentage points in the tax rate, most people will see, you know, depending on their property value or how much it increased, like a $9 to $200 increase in their city taxes. So it, I mean, that value increase is, is a blessing and it, and it's a curse, so.
How strong are we on this maintenance position, and where do we know where that's going to end up at, and what department?
That would be a question for Park and Rec.
It seems a little high. I know with insurance and all this stuff, but it still seems a little high for, depending on what, what you want that person to do.
Thank you, Council President. Councillors, can you repeat your question?
Yeah, just, I'm curious about the added maintenance position. What's your intent for that?
So that would be a parks maintenance primary position to, you know, continue to enhance our parks and then shift over during the winter months inside to provide that maintenance and snow plowing and everything that we need. Over, over the last few years, we've seen a decrease in our seasonal positions and our seasonal help, which has put us at a disadvantage with our full-time positions to be able to keep up, along with there, there has been a shift to crew leader, into a crew leader position, even though we have the same amount of positions in our maintenance staff right now that we did years ago. There's just been some shift to responsibilities with facility maintenance supervisor and crew leaders.
And let's keep in mind that $95,000 isn't just the salary. That's all of their benefits as well. And benefits are typically 30 to 40% of the salary.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to see us get it down a little bit more, but usually, you usually work your magic anyway between now and December 5th.
I don't know that there's a lot more that can change. One of the things that usually maybe changes is once the PUC gets their budget completed, their in lieu contribution may go up a little bit. But looking at what they have in there right now, I don't see a big enough increase in there to make much of an impact.
Well, I'm not hearing anybody else commenting. I know it's a lot of work, and I appreciate the work that you put in. I appreciate that you show us the graph and where we're, where we are with our other cities to compare ourselves to. I mean, you know, that's the way the public knows, you know, we're looking at it, and everybody's dealing with inflation. But I'm going to take a chance here and offer the resolution, accepting the preliminary 2024 budget for the city of New Ulm with a total appropriations, $27,410,217, and a maximum property tax levy of, of $9,951,454, and setting the public hearing dates for December 5th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. And continuation, public hearing for the December 12th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m., if needed, to consider the 2024 budget.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion does carry. Item number 5.7, in regards to acceptance, acceptance of insurance service proposals.
Councillors, as requested or as, as really has been set by council for past practice in the last several years, we did go out for bid for the, for the insurance services this year. We did receive six proposals, which was quite a good turnout compared to what we have received in the past. You can see there that the proposals range anywhere from, well, some, you know, some bid a flat fee, some bid a percentage of the premium, using this year's premium as a basis in order to compare those. They range anywhere from either, you can say either one or five, five and a half percent to, to, no, I can't edit that way. We'll go with dollar amounts. I didn't put it on here the other way. Anywhere from $11,000 annually to $96,000 annually. All of the, they were, they were all good proposals. All of them, most of them had local agents. One was an outside agency, which has a large portion of the league's business as well, so they are well qualified as well. And all of them seem, appear to be able to get the boiler and machinery coverage that we need as well.
Madam President, I'll take the first shot at this if you're willing.
Okay.
Obviously, this is a huge expense for our city. I spent quite a bit of time going through these proposals and really taking a look at it. I think I looked at it, I know I looked at it a little bit different once city staff did. So I won't take up a lot of time, so I just want to hit the high points and low points on some of the proposals. First of all, the Christensen Group, which the city staff is recommending, did have the lowest price. However, when you really looked at that proposal, it was really, in my opinion, a very rushed presentation. I went to their website, and it's a terrible website. Sorry if you're here, it's not good. It doesn't, you cannot find out who works in the city of New Ulm. You cannot find that out on that website. It doesn't, no clue. Mentions in our proposal a Jacob that would be assigned here, works here, and I'm assuming he's an agent, but it doesn't really say that either. They give bios of the claims people, but not the people that would also be handling the phone calls and handling the day-to-day stuff. No clue who the, who those folks are or their background. So it bothered me. So actually, I tossed their proposal. Then I looked at North Risk, which comes in at number two, and my, couple negative things in that area is they have some hidden fees, and if you got to look really close to find them. But I saw in their attorney fees at $250 an hour that are not included in the main proposal, at least how I read it, and safety consultant at $300 an hour. They don't have a local office, but they did have some really good cyber programming that I really did like. But their main office is in Hastings. So, man, and I, I'll get back to that in a minute. We moved down to the third, came in third place was Firth Miley, our current insurance agent, 21 years with New Ulm. The cost is $16,000 more. However, there would not be any changeover costs, because they're already doing the work. They're very invested in our community, they got a very active website that's current. And then the last one that I'll comment on was the Hearth proposal. Same main cost, again, a great local website, 40 years of experience. I really liked their talk about facilities and meetings with people in our, on our city staff. Mapping, that was kind of a new concept to me, that I, I really liked reading about that. And meetings with decision makers. One of the concepts I saw in there was some that have to pay for the boiler machinery policy. So all in all, when you really look at them and you put them all on a sheet, do we really want to send a check that big, $670,000, out of our community versus picking one of our two local folks that have staff and families here? So.
Les, can I just clarify something with the insurance? The, the league, the League of Minnesota City's Insurance Trust is actually who we pay our premiums to. They carry our insurance. The local agent aids with questions, they aid, they aid with renewal, with the renewal process. But our claims are submitted to the league and.
But they represent our claims, right?
No, the league, the, the claims are submitted right to the league.
To the league.
Yep.
Okay.
We copy the, the agent so that they know what's going on and if we have questions.
Well, I'll continue with what, I'm just about done here, just that we have companies that are either invested in our local community or they're not. And if you take a look at the top two, my, my hand hints, moves over to keeping it right where we're at, just based on the information I have on the proposals.
Thank you very much for that, Counselor Schultz. That's, when I, I was presented this exact same information, obviously, and, and I kind of looked at it in the exact same way, that first and foremost, I, I wanted to look local. Who's involved in this community? Who's invested in this community? Who's active in this community? I mean, there's things like our current insurance agent right now that picked up things at the EDA with the, the daycare center that we missed. I mean, things like that, that you find that by being involved on commissions, you be, find those by being involved in city affairs. I mean, that's what having individuals locally here do and, and can catch. So I, I appreciate the bids put together by Firth and, Firth and Hearth. And yeah, I mean, Christensen Group does have an individual that's local, but like I said, it's, the rest are kind of out in the wind. When you even, you look them up and, well, this person's stationed out of the city somewhere, but used to live in New Ulm, well, that's, that's not a great, great active point with that. So I'm kind of on the same page as you with that as well. So thank you for breaking it down a little bit more detailed.
My comment on that, though, so the city attorney, very good firms, Hearth Agency and Firth Miley, what do you do in a tie?
Members of the council, this is a request for proposals. This is not a competitive bid situation where you're required to award to the lowest bidder. You can certainly take price into account. You can take other features of the proposals into account, too. So I would just recommend, as you're doing now, weighing the totality of the proposals to find the best fit.
Well, when I looked at them, you know, it's, and I also went on and looked, checked out their websites also and capacities, and, you know, I looked at our current insurance agent, he's got most of the businesses in our downtown for liquor licenses and different things. And with all the new special events we've been having, you know, like the volleyball, you know, event, he looked at what kind of needs they needed for that. He's looking out continuously, because every day, we're changing. And if we're not changing, we're not moving forward. So he's looking at the different needs that the city needs and, you know, and the daycare needs. And, you know, he addressed it, what the EDA needed to, you know, because he looked at current, at other daycare facilities that he's offering insurance to and things like that. And I know we're tied, but, you know, for the same number here, but does that give justification to change something that we've got 20 years of full service, you know, in those regards? So, and, you know, I think we have to keep it within our, our local business, because they, they own a building, you know, they've got families, employees, and, and I appreciate that, you know, their door is always open for questions and, and feedback, so.
Mayor?
Well, I, I would support keeping it local. Again, the, we have two people here that they're at the same level. I, I appreciate what Firth has done as far as providing service for us. I don't know that Hearth would do any less if he were our representative, had the opportunity to deal with the same issues and opportunities that we've had. I, I would support going local as opposed to out of town. I just think it, it makes good sense as far as the city of New Ulm. And even though it is an additional expense, it's not that significant in the scheme of our total budget.
Thank you.
I'm hearing some consensus. I'm going to go ahead and offer a resolution approving five-year agreement with the Firth Miley Insurance Service to provide insurance services for the city of New Ulm for the years beginning January 1st, 2024, through December 31st, 2028, and authorize the city manager to sign the contract.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? I just would like to note that the two agents that are, I guess, where we're boiling it down to are both here, and would either one of them care to be heard? Okay. Motion in a second. Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion carries. Item number 5.8, hardship deferral for the 2024 installment due for 2018 USA improvements.
Counselor, this, councillors, this deferral has been granted in the past, over the past several years. He continues to meet those qualifications for that deferral.
Thank you.
I guess, is there a limit at how many times one can apply for a hardship deferral?
Nope, it's completely based on income, property value.
And then basically, it gets settled up once the house would ever be.
Yeah, if the house would ever sold, yeah, then whoever buys that would have to pay those assessments and things that are sitting out there.
Well, for the resolution to approve the hardship deferral for the 2024 installment due of $2,223.74 to, for the 2018 USA improvement charges for the property owner at 1116 Third North Street, New Ulm. Legal description, rear 80-foot of Lot 14, Block 185, north of center.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 5.9, 2023 delinquent water and wastewater assessments.
Councillors, this list is, has been examined by my staff, and this will come before you if this public hearing date is approved.
Thank you.
I'll motion to approve established special assessments for the 2023 delinquent water and wastewater assessments and set a date for a public hearing on Tuesday, October 17th, 2023, at 4:30 p.m.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 5.10, BMX request for temporary camping.
Thank you, Council President Becker and councillors. River Valley BMX is asking you to authorize temporary camping on Friday, September 29th, and Saturday, September 30th, at South German Park. This is the second request. This is the second request coming to you this year. Normally, it's a one-time, a year deal, but the River Valley BMX Association is trying to host more of these tournaments, and this is the case here. They don't feel that there would be a high number of campers at the site, but they wanted to offer that to those coming down to spend the day here.
I think I mentioned this last time, there's like 500 people that come to this. It's crazy. There's just lots of people down there, and there's families and it's kids. And how do they do, and one thing I never asked before, but how do they do with cleanup? I mean, do they, we never hear any problems, so it must be okay.
I did ask that same question to our parks crew, just to see if there was any issues in that area, and they haven't noticed any issues that way. Also, we have a very active association right now, River Valley BMX, and they do a great job of partnering with us to make sure that it is a clean cleanup for those.
It's a great family event, and there's adults that race BMX too, even, not as old as me, but pretty close.
My last meeting with them, they have 70-year-olds competing.
Oh, okay, all right. There you go, Mayor, let's go.
I'll offer the resolution authorizing the overnight temporary camping not to exceed five recreational fires in South German Park near Third South Street for BMX Minnesota State Qualifying Racing Event on the night of Friday, September 29th and Saturday, September 30th, 2023.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 5.11, tobacco and cannabis smoke-free parks, trails, and recreation facilities policy. Once again, Mr. Shugel.
Yes, thank you, Council President Becker and councillors. Before you is a draft ordinance, update to our ordinance for our tobacco-free policy to a smoke-free tobacco and cannabis policy, cannabis-free policy. And as you know, our parks have been tobacco-free since January of 2021, and on August 1st, the state decriminalized cannabis use in Minnesota. So this policy is really just enacting that and updating our existing ordinance to include cannabis as a, as a smoke-free product in our parks. Already, the Office of Cannabis Management says in any location where aerosol, vapor, smoke of any cannabis product could be inhaled by a minor, it is illegal even under these new rules. So this would just be updating our policy to enact with that. And many communities since August 1st have adopted a policy very similar to this and/or are considering doing that. So it would be my recommendation that we update our policy, but happy to answer any questions.
Being a smoker, and I was all for the last time, no smoking in city parks. I'll adopt the proposed tobacco and cannabis smoke-free parks, trails, and recreation facilities policy to become effective January 1, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Joey, just a quick question on what about vaping? I mean, how does that?
Yeah, so that's laid out in here, same.
It doesn't say it on the sign, right?
Yes, so we.
Should it? Because that's such a popular thing right now.
Right. You know, it's, this is a policy that it's hard to achieve. Borkert could probably tell you the same thing. It's hard to police, you know, so it's laying it out in our, in our ordinance. And the one thing about vaping, smoking, you know, whatever you're using in that, it affects other people and you're able to visibly see it, so, you know, people sometimes police that themselves.
All right. Thanks, Rick.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 5.13, park and rec donations.
Thank you, Councillor Becker. I was out of order because I, we moved that around, sorry. Councillor Becker and city councillors, asking you to authorize a donation for, let me get there.
$2,700.
$2,700 for a park bench donated from Patricia Holla and Teresa Seidel. This bench would be placed at North Park, near the lower playground, located near Field 2 at North Park, so, and the amount donated was $2,700.
And honoring Lori Brandle.
Honoring Lori Brandle.
I'll offer the resolution to accept a donation to the city of New Ulm through the Park and Rec Department from Patricia Holla, Teresa Seidel, amount of $2,700 for a bench in North Park honoring Lori Brandle.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
I was just going to ask, Joey, is this like an art stone bench?
Exactly. This is an art stone bench that is pretty common in, as these memorials.
Thank you. Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion does carry. Item number 5.14, fire department donations.
I'll offer the resolution to accept the following donations to the New Ulm Fire Department. $500 from the Brown County Ag Society for Fire Suppression Services at the Demo Derby, $2,215 from the Brown County Ag Society for auction items purchased during Fire Brick for Firefighters event, and $300 from Randall and Mary Kraus for the Steve Ferrison Memorial.
Second.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion does carry. At this time, the council meeting will be adjourned so that we can move into a closed session. The New Ulm City Council will convene a closed session in accordance with Minnesota statutes 13D.05 subdivision 3C3 to discuss the development or consideration of offers or counteroffers for the purchase of sale of real property located and described as parcel ID number
Oh. All that one.
Yes, we all know what that means. I know what that means. At this time, we are going to move into a closed session and, do I adjourn? Robert, do I adjourn?